What's up?
Super. I have the planning board, May 7th, 2015. Take a minute to read it and then I'll entertain a motion. Please.
I kinda thought so, but I didn't think that. Thank you. There's actually some people waiting out here, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Paul here? Is Ken Paul?
Ah, he's upstairs.
He's upstairs.
Can I help you?
Guy, you talk to Kevin.
Okay, he, um... He'll be in a little bit.
I got halfway down, I realized I had my slippers on.
Right.
And I didn't bring my...
I'm just saving, right? I'm gonna do the table, you're all good.
Well, I just got home a few minutes ago.
Well, you're lucky we don't have the monkey cam tonight. There you go.
Oh, thank you. I can doodle there.
There you go.
I know, we really should have at least four cameras. We get every angle.
Yeah.
Some people hide behind the podium, you know, they're being posed.
I'm gonna read it, second minute, let's read it.
One second.
Any chances of corrections? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? Super. Today is, uh, 21? 22. Nice. Okay. Uh, old business. MMA inquiry, RE proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance relating hysterical structures. Y'all got a chance to read it? The gist of it is, they agree with the, uh, other attorneys that it does not meet the comprehensive plan. Now, we can make a recommendation if you want to the selectmen about this.
Or not, I don't care.
One of the points in there seemed to, I didn't think had anything to do with what we had been talking about in the sense that it says, um, since the planning board does not agree with Attorney Moore's advice. I don't remember us agreeing.
We haven't gotten anywhere yet.
All we asked was just what they thought, yeah. And, but, but they did say that, I mean, we're lucky we got this much on them because, like they said, once the lawyer steps in, then they kinda take a backseat and decide not to say anything. But, in this case, they do happen to agree. So... And, all those zoning changes have to be, have to go to the state anyway, they can get, go through the DEP. And they have a copy of our comprehensive plan, and they look at them and they say whether they meet the plan or not. So, regardless of what happens with this, if it ends up, you know, coming up a town meeting and it's passed, it'll go to the state and they'll be the final arbiter.
Excuse me for being late.
That's alright.
The, um, schoolhouse would not go to DEP?
It's a zoning change, that's what...
No. Only shoreline zoning things go to DEP.
Well, if they take any of our zoning changes, well, it goes to somebody.
I don't think so.
I don't know, we've had them kicked back.
Well, it goes to the state, but do they, they judge it?
I don't, I don't think...
I don't remember that ever being a problem.
It's a shoreline zoning issue, it doesn't go to DEP.
Well, that may be that.
I mean, I know, did somebody tell us that? Kenny was...
It seems to me that we've always had...
Or is it a state law?
Our zoning stuff has always gone to the state. And if there's a problem, they let us know. And if there isn't in 45 days, then we're fine. Now, maybe it is just shoreline, but...
That's, that's...
For some, I mean, I know it's shoreline, but I thought it was everything.
Well, the comprehensive plan went to the DEP. That was a big deal. They had to go through and make sure.
Because we adjusted shoreline with it, yeah. Anyway, so what do you guys wanna do?
What is it for us? What is our...
We can make a recommendation, yea or nay, as far as the petition, uh, zoning change. Or we can ignore it.
If three lawyers think that it's not compatible with the comprehensive plan, then aren't our hands tied?
Well, we can still make an opinion.
Yeah.
Well, my opinion is...
But it's up to the...
And what was their, what's your main point here, Chip?
I'm not exactly sure. You'd have to go back to what Brad Moore and Lankowski said.
We have that somewhere. Do you wanna go back to that today?
If you want to. It's not up to us, though, whether it gets included or not.
Testifying that shouldn't be... The law is not setting up a committee to start documenting historical... Nor are they giving it available for visitation. Or, they're not doing anything with it, but pushing it back to get hit again.
But is it about the single case, or is it about the whole change in order to...
Not...
Well, the ordinance doesn't have anything to do with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, logging and...
We've already made a statement.
Well, there's two places. I, I think we should go back to that.
And change... Or is this always the way it's been?
There's two places where they talk about it, that they...
I always thought we had to get to bed. And then...
And then the petition came out, that's why we had to look at it again. So, are you ready to make a motion, then? Or is the consensus, we don't wanna do anything about it? See, it's how we already made us, uh...
We already washed our hands, you know?
Yes. We can leave it at that.
But we didn't speak specifically about the petition.
No, we spoke about one specific case. And we made a recommendation on that based on the ordinance. The petition is entirely separate, it talks about multiple cases getting known.
Right, yeah.
And we can make a recommendation on that in the future, at, uh...
You're right.
So, I mean, I, I think they are separate.
Yeah, no, you're right.
You're right.
Pondering.
Is there opportunity for comment, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, this isn't a public hearing.
Okay, I guess not, then, huh?
Well, so a member of the board could call on you, huh?
No.
We could. I can right now, I know Bob Moore should build this field. Absolutely.
This isn't America!
Good one.
Go ahead.
Well...
Make a motion?
I make a motion that people in the audience should be able to speak on this, uh, subject, considering we haven't yet come to an agreement on it, and there's discussion that we have.
I second the motion.
Go ahead, what do you got, Tom?
Thanks, Chip.
Why, make it short!
I am not going to, I am not going to repeat any arguments that I have already made, okay?
Well, then you may as well sit down.
Now, was there other arguments to make here?
Uh...
Alright?
Alright.
And basically, I'm just going to argue the, the home rule issue, okay? Um, one of our favorite pieces of legislation in this state of Maine and all the rest of the states of New England is our home rule.
Well, you've made this argument before.
No, I haven't.
You've mentioned home rule before.
I've mentioned it, I haven't made it. What is home rule subject, okay?
Alright, go ahead.
There are two steps between the certification of a petition and its enactment. They are, one, determine its legality, which is the responsibility of the selectmen. And, second is determine its provenance, which I would maintain for you is the function of the town meeting and the, and the, is reserved to the town meeting. Okay? The argument that has been made, or opinion that has been written, um, you're all familiar with, okay? So, let's take a look at what the law says about the ability of a town to enact an ordinance and the presumptions that are inherent in that process. Quickly, Chip, I will. Okay. Title 30A, 3031, ordinance power for the home rule authority. States first, municipality may exercise any power which its legislature has the power to confer, which is not denied, and exercise any power or function granted by the Constitution of the State of Maine. That's what it says. Basically, if the state doesn't outlaw it, it's legal for the town to enact, okay? But, not only does it simply say that, it goes on to expound on what that means. It says in the next paragraph, and I can read you the exact provisions, but I've kind of abbreviated them. The provisions of this rule shall be liberally interpreted. What does that mean? It means that there's a presumption here, which the act, the law actually goes on the state. There's a presumption of legality unless it can be demonstrated otherwise, okay? Uh, again, it, there, there exists a revolting presumption that an ordinance is a valid exercise of municipality's home rule authority, unless it can be demonstrated that the ordinance, the terminology in the law is, frustrates the purpose of state law. And what does that mean? It means obstructs the exercise of state law. That's it, plain and simple. That's what the rule says. The rule says that the town may enact virtually any ordinance, okay? That is not clearly obstructive of state law. And that the presumption of its not being obstructed to state law, or the presumption of its being obstructed by state law is on the burden who would claim that it does obstruct state law. I would offer to you an opinion, or an observation, that there's nothing in here that offers a balanced opinion, that's the legal opinion. That's plain advocacy. It does not look at developing a balanced opinion, doesn't look at all the issues involved in the case. Starts out presumptuously, finding everything it can to obstruct the passage of the ordinance. But it doesn't even do that successfully because it does not put what is required before you. It does not state law or case law that says why this is illegal. And the home rule, home rule law requires that, in order to obstruct the town from testing, to make it, or to declare it illegal. Okay? We're not talking about prudence here, prudence of it. That, again, rests with the, with the town meeting. We're talking about the legality of it. Okay? So, the burden is on you, folks, if you decide that it doesn't comply with, I believe the selectmen asked you to look at, um, what the comprehensive plan. The burden is on you, the state likes, why it doesn't...
Any zoning ordinance, if we have a comprehensive plan, needs to, um...
Comply.
Comply with the comprehensive plan.
I don't know about that, that's, that's...
Well, and that's, now that's state law. Otherwise, there's no reason, there's no reason to have cop plans. And we have to have it, and if we write certain things in it, then any zoning changes we make have to agree with it.
I think that makes perfect sense.
Now, there's, for what it's worth, there's three lawyers have weighed in, and all three have said that as far as they're concerned, it does not comply with the comprehensive plan.
You said that?
The MMA agreed with the first two.
Well, I wouldn't say they agreed or disagreed.
Well, yes, they did. They said they agreed, for crying in the bucket.
I made my appeal clear. I think the burden is on you, folks, though, the state's wife doesn't comply, if that's so. Thank you.
Well, then, you know, we've got three lawyers that say the same thing. So, there again, all we're making is a recommendation, because it's not up to us, it's up to the selectmen, whether it's on the, the part of the warrant or not. And, they can listen to us, or they cannot listen to us. And, the way things have been going, chances are, they may not listen to us. Regardless of what we say. Even if we happen to agree with them. So, what are we gonna do? Let's do it quick. We haven't got all night. Yes, Bob?
Alright, I'm gonna, I'll make a motion, um, and then maybe we can make a decision, okay? Although agreeing with the right to petition, um, based on everything that we've heard, I move that we not support the red schoolhouse petition.
Is there a second?
One second.
Further discussion? Anybody? Alright. I hear you. It's my job, too, usually.
One second.
You're only dead... Uh, any discussion, anybody? We're talking about the, uh, Little Red House in the Prairie petition.
Well, the question that came down to us was, do we think that it agrees with the comprehensive plan?
Right.
And we have three lawyers saying that they do not think it fits with the comprehensive plan.
I hear you. Anybody else? Are we done? One, two, three, four. You guys get to sit it out.
I can't vote, Tim.
Oh, that's right. So, ooh, eh, but you're gonna be working with Junior, aren't you?
I don't mind where the little red schoolhouse is, when we build it then.
Yeah. Well, we don't like...
I'm not biased, standing in the road.
I know you're not. But we'll let Bob vote. Because there's no pecuniary interest. One way or the other. All those in favor of the motion, which is to agree with what the lawyers have said in that the proposed petition does not comply with the comprehensive plan, say aye.
Aye.
All who oppose, nay? Alright, that's it, we're done. Sorry.
Thank you.
Is there gonna be a meet the candidates tonight?
What's that?
Meet the candidates tonight, have you thought about it or no?
I have thought about it, that's as far as I've gone. You wanna do something about it?
Well, I may not be in town, though, unfortunately.
Alright. I can run when I'm running before, by myself.
Well...
Or David, I can get David to do it, there's a...
It's gotta be sooner versus later, though. Because people are already voting.
True.
If you wanna do it.
I'm right up to about there.
Well, then...
Between this...
Ah, I hear you! Hey, if we don't have one, we don't have one, it's no skin off my nose. But there is a horse race!
Huh?
There is a horse race, though.
Well, there are all kinds of horses, right?
Yeah. Alright, take care, guys.
Goodnight.
Have luck! Alright, number two. Ah, there it is. Thomas Harmon, PE, PLS, Civil Consultants. Condition use application for middle extraction, lot, map 207, lot, on, on 1, H Road. Where the devil is that?
It's the place with the boost stand.
Who's that?
I can show you.
Alright.
You wanna do a one-up here, just like facing back?
Oh!
Was Ken here, Ken? Ken's here, right?
These are the selectmen.
What are they doing?
Oh, come on, now.
They're not doing a wedding color.
They get plenty of attention.
Share my other shelves. Okay, so what do you got?
Two sets of doors.
I don't know. Open it up and see what's in there.
What I gave them was a subdivision plan, the approval for all of those. So, after it, and then you have a development plan.
Oh, yeah.
Then it goes, uh...
What's up, Chris, man, they go?
Uh, he was... So, basically, where, get the full book up here for more. You've got two sets of plans.
And the stock discovered?
I don't know, you can...
That's right, that's what I think.
Subdivision plan, that I turned into the pre-app. I guess maybe I should have turned into more copies, but I gave some of them out to my seventeen since those might be last hour.
Just what we were looking at.
So, here's...
Yeah, can you see that one?
Subdivision known as Moose Pond Village, I guess, which is H Road, Anderson Cove Road, Moose Pond.
Right up by my house.
And so, what that had was 12 to 13 lots. The people that we're working for, I'm sorry, I'm Tom Harmon, this is Charlie Pizzelli.
How you doing?
Charlie's from, from Resource International. And he would be the person developing a gravel pit here, excavation permit. Essentially, he has an option on this piece of property minus the lots that were subdivided. I believe there's either 12 or 13 lots here. And so, what we're talking about doing is doing the extraction permit in these areas. This total parcel is somewhere over 200 acres. And what we're talking about doing is doing some excavation of about 35 acres here. It appears to us that there were about 12 acres that somebody came in here, starting in the 1980s. And I don't know exactly when they got done doing it, but Midway was in here, Jimmy Watkins, I think, was in here.
There's been half a dozen guys over the years.
Yeah, started in this area, yeah. And so, what we're, we're proposing is to continue the excavation on this site. This is the subdivision, subdivision plan, shows the contours, the lots, dinner area, it's a boundary survey. And then what we gave you was a sketch plan proposing what we're going to be doing for excavation. So, one of the things these fellows are doing now, if you take a look at the shading area here, this is the area of disturbance that's been disturbed over the years and not reclaimed. So, they'll be coming in here reclaiming this area. And what we're doing is looking to do excavation in this area here, about 35 acres in total. They presently have a DEP permit to do that, under the, the, by the rule process, under the DEP, where they can have 10 acres open at a time.
Right.
And then, as you open it, as you finish it up, you reclaim that and move on, but you can't have more than 10 acres open. So, what we're talking about is doing this section here. There is an entrance, existing entrance, right here, that really doesn't have very, isn't a very good entrance. It does not have good site distance. So, what we're proposing to do is move the entrance to here. This entrance will have over 550 feet of site distance on one direction, in the air direction. Yeah, there will be over 1,100 feet of site distance.
Their entrance is on the H Road?
Their entrance is on the H Road. The existing entrance is on the H Road now. We'd be moving it to the east. Okay, back this way.
Still on the...
Just go on the H Road.
The movement, that's the new one.
So, it said, this is a pre-app. We will come back in with grading plan in more detail, and all the pieces that are required for the conditional use permit. But what we wanted to do was come in with this now, just run through it with you, see if you wanna go over, have a look at the property, get an idea of what your thoughts were, anything in particular you did want us to be looking at. These people are interested in coming in now and working on the reclamation, not taking anything off the land or anything like that, but getting started on this reclamation. To kind of run that...
So reclaim this, that's already been worked.
Right.
But, when you start mining here, you could be traveling through on this road anyways, right?
We'd be using a new entrance, wouldn't we?
Right.
This, this entrance has to be cleared. What he's talking about is this here, this, this now is not even cleared. Alright, this would have to be cleared and a brand new entrance put in there.
How many acres are open there now?
I'm gonna tell you about, we think about 12.
I don't know, I mean, eh, I would've thought they scraped an awful lot more than that.
I didn't think, I went in initially to...
Did you go all the way to the back, where they've done some logging last fall?
Yeah, I don't think they excavated that, did they?
Eh, no, but it's, it's all been opened up, though. I mean, and therefore, you guys are gonna end up working, right?
We'll be back here, if you look back here, there's a pretty good knoll.
Yeah.
And through this area, this is the area that looks like makes the most sense. There, in this area, we'd have a scale, you know, office area.
A scale?
Scale, that's the way they'll be selling stuff.
Oh! This is gonna be a business. I thought it was just, I thought you were just hauling gravel out.
But that's a business.
Well, yeah, but I didn't know you were gonna be, uh, selling it on site.
Well, he, I don't know if you'll be selling it on site, but that is the way of measuring it, of what people are taking. Okay, so what you do is you turn it into a tonnage, and when somebody drives in with a truck, they get weighed. When they drive out, they get weighed. And that's how they pay for the turnover they take out.
You're the first operation, I don't, I don't know if, uh...
Not everyone does it that way.
Nobody does it that way.
Charlie, do you wanna...
Can I just interject for one second?
Yeah.
That's just an option, there's also an option of having a weigh scale in the loading.
Oh, okay.
So, when I first met Tom, that was one of the options that we had discussed, and I thought if we just put it on the plan, you know, in the event that it did happen, it was brought up, that we would, you know, that we did talk about it. But the way it's heading now is that that won't be out there, that there'd be an office trailer there, but...
I don't have a problem with it, I just, just surprise, because it's a, it's a bigger deal than all the other pits in town.
Right. It's just a way, I mean, most people sell it by the yard, but the, uh, we convert it to the ton and, and do it that way.
Um, any plans for, uh, crushing rock or anything?
The material out there, uh, 80% of it is smaller than two inches, 82% actually is smaller than two inches. Uh, there's, there's a potential to do some crushing, but not a lot. Uh, there's only 18% of the pile is two inch plus. But, and it's actually, it stops at about six inches, so, um, you know, for, and I'll, I mean, it could be, it all may be 100,000, 150,000 yards maybe of material that may have to be crushed at some point, rather than just leave a big pile of boulders around, you know?
Are you guys gonna, uh, um, check for the water table, you're gonna, have you found any of the old test wells that were back there from Midway?
We found a couple, and we're also putting in some new ones.
Did you?
Yes.
So, we'll be seeing those down the road, right?
By all means, sure. No, that's, that is...
I mean, where the, where the water level is, and, you know...
That is a condition of the DEP permit, that there has to be a well for every five acres you have open, or you open, when you're working it, so, you'll have at least two if you've got 10 open. We, there is one open here. We believe the water table's about 186.
581. A 586.
586.
586.
586.
So, where are you guys at?
We got this thing about 591, 592, and we're showing non-disturbance at 594. In other words, once we hit 594, we don't disturb anymore, we're inside that. It needs to be interiorly, it needs to have an actual interior drain. Though it has to drain interior, so you can't go beyond that.
Uh... Are you gonna have to have any kind of retention or detention, or you don't know yet?
You wouldn't typically in a sand pit or gravel pit, that, that actually...
How does the subdivision overlay with this?
Excuse me?
The subdivision, how does that overlay with this now?
What the subdivision, if we take a look at this one?
The lots are all along the outside. There's a few along the H Road, then down along on Anderson Cove.
And these people don't have any rights in those lots?
That's right, because this isn't America.
So, this one, they make a cluster of subdivision, this big, this parcel, that was some lots from it?
Yeah, we did this, eh, three, four, five?
Oh, seven. Okay, bye quick.
Yeah, so we did this there. Um, now there, well, you're stating over word that there's no wetlands, so you're...
We're stating we have puffers from the wetlands. You know, these, those are here, those will all be my town, partially my town now, but they'll all be my town.
Tom, when you say, the, the lot owners have no rights, what do you, what do you, what are you alluding to there?
We, no, what I say is, we have no rights in the lots.
Oh, okay.
They, they have rights from the people that own the subdivision now.
Right.
To mine it, with a, with a purchase option. But they don't have a purchase option or rights in any of the lots, the small lots.
Run that by again.
These, these lots, right here, so, okay? Those, those will be retained by the people that own the land now.
Correct.
The people that are making the application have a right from them to mine it. And they have a purchase option to purchase the land that they're mining.
Not the individual lots that were subdivided on each...
The lots, lots 1 through 12, 1 through 13 are excluded from that agreement.
Okay. And what, what is the proximity to the lot line that...
And what, what is the proximity to the lot line that you're?
Typically, you would be the lots. We believe that the lots that are owned by the landowner will have an agreement that we can come within 25 feet, where you want it. We can come to 25 feet. The lots that don't belong to the landowner, such as in this area.
When you say the landlord, you mean, Harry?
Not Harry, it's Charlie now, yep, yep. Now, these lots down here were not part of that.
Right.
So there's a hundred foot at that note. So when we put in an application, we'll have that exerted, Charlie, folks, that they can come to 25 feet, they can come within that.
Along here.
That seems awful.
Close.
Close for, we'll have to pass that through our zoning board.
Well, I believe that's what the zoning said, that's why I said, because I think that's what the zoning said.
It may.
It said with agreement, you can come within 25, 25 feet from the party, right?
And how many lots does that entail, you know?
12 or 13 is gonna change the entrance.
I don't have that agreement with me right now, but see, the 12 or 13s.
We ran under the impression that one or two of the lots that were not owned by.
They are still all owned by Charlie. I think there's somebody out there who has an agreement with it.
Yeah.
No, no, it's something.
Don't believe so.
So, and as you've drawn this, Tom, the, uh, this is pretty much a slope into a pan.
That's right. What we did is we actually traced 594.
Yeah.
And then came back from that.
Yeah.
With the reclamation. So we never go outside, that's why you see it coming around in places.
And these little, uh, is this a pathway?
I think that, yeah, was disturbance at this point, yeah.
Um, when, when you come back with a, I mean, this isn't what we would call a sketch plan yet, right?
He was just dropping it off tonight, basically, and just informing you guys.
This is pre-app, yeah. I don't think we come back with sketch plan on this, we just turn an application for the conditional use, right?
When he comes back, you're gonna be looking for something more?
Yeah, well, I just forgot.
But then, you know, I just assumed here, which, you know.
Oh, the reclamation, your proposed reclamation plan underway would be an interesting thing to.
Doing underway, okay.
Yeah.
And what we're doing is we're showing on this plan, these crosshatched, crosshatched areas?
Yeah.
Are the area that's being reclaimed. Okay, and basically that's it.
Yeah, and you, you fellows are proposing that that work would be completed to the extent as shown in the shaded area prior to, um, new excavation?
We have not said that, no.
Okay.
No, then, you know, these fellows were not responsible for doing that. They are, they are in agreement that they will reclaim it.
Yeah.
But I didn't think they particularly wanted to say, okay, it's gonna be all reclaimed.
In that time.
Prior to doing any more.
This, you probably are well aware that this lot has not been treated very kind.
Take a look at it, who goes, take a look at it, I walked on it, yeah.
I would hope that, um, you guys would set a new standard of activity out there, that would be nice, that would be refreshing.
Charlie has had quite a bit of experience in this type of operation, he has not worked in this area.
Yeah.
But, and I have not worked with him before, but he assures me that what he likes to do is leave a piece of property so it has a value when it's done.
You folks are probably aware of the, uh, struggles that have gone on with gravel extraction in Acton in the past. Because we've seen them before, I think. And one, one issue I think that has to be handled carefully by you folks is the, is the traffic, uh, incoming in egress from this. So us to have some respect for the folks that live in downtown Acton and in North Acton.
Well, that took, that took as long as yours, that entrance is. First, I'll look at that.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much lawn was left on site from the previous excavation?
I can't tell you that, you have a.
Any idea?
I mean, it's hard to tell because it's, you know, there's some states overgrown and.
Yeah.
But my intent is, I'll be.
Well, they usually pile it up, right?
Right, but it's, there's some stuff that's got, you know, trees growing on it again, and it's just hard to tell.
It's disappeared too over the years.
Right. But it, but, and I'll be perfectly frank, the site's a mess right now. It's a nightmare. And my intent is to clean it. And I would like to get that done before I, you know, if and when I get my permit to remove. So the answer to your question is I'll find it pretty quick. And, you know, I'll be using it to reclaim what's there now, but.
You think you'll bring us a physical reclamation plan telling us kind of where you're gonna get the new soil from? How much you're gonna bring in per acre and things like this?
I mean, I talked to a previous person that had worked in there, and they assured me that there's enough room on site to reclaim what's disturbed. You know, excluding the road and probably like a parking area and a lay down area for the material and stuff like that.
Sure.
So I, I think we're gonna, I mean, as far as the plans go, we'll have a plan that'll show areas of excavation.
Essentially, what it is, is there cannot be more than 10 acres open.
Right.
It has to be reclaimed, once you go beyond 10, then you, you know.
And that's DEP rule?
That's DEP, that's the right rule from DEP.
So that's why some of this has to be reclaimed before you can start working in here, I would think.
Now, before we grant a conditional use permit, I'd like to see some sort of written reclamation plan that kind of gives, you know, some sort of figures to how much lawn's gonna be brought in. What's the plan is, what the slopes are like for the area.
More just a timeframe of when it's gonna.
Absolutely, any sort of information.
How many, how many yards they need to bring in or.
Yep.
And realistically, if they don't have it there, they're getting it from over where they opened up the new pit. And the 10 acres doesn't include roads, stockpiles, all that is still exempt. Originally, when they came back in, just like the other gravel pits that Tom's worked with, they all go for that 10,000 yards exempt. So he can pull 10,000 yards a year out of this, and it doesn't have anything to do with the planning board. So they're coming forward to open a legitimate business and, and process that way. It is a large area.
I don't, I don't like to make things spin, okay, coming forward planning board. I think I have a question, is that can he go in there now and work on the reclamation of that without?
We've talked earlier.
Without a conditional use permit?
I'm okay with it being reclaimed, the old mess that's out there, providing you're not creating a new area. If you find a little more on site and wanna start reclaiming it, the, the more you reclaim, the better it is.
And you have no permit that would prohibit you from doing that?
I'm sorry.
There's nothing prohibiting you from doing that?
I don't believe there is, no. But it, but then again, you don't wanna do something that the town doesn't want you to do. You know, that's not a good thing to start.
Just about anything is better than.
What's the?
Nothing, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that once he gets in there and gets working some on that, he's gonna have a better handle on what he has for materials that he'll work with also. You know, right now, he's almost gotta do some digging to see what's there to, to work with. If you wanna take a walk up there and take a look, it's really hard to tell which one.
I think, well, I don't know if it was Midway or what was the next guy in. There were a couple spots where they just about hit the water table though. And there are areas where there's standing water almost all year.
Could there be vinyl pools now?
Yeah.
Shit, the harshest word a developer can hear.
Not significant ones.
There you go, there's the word.
Down in here, wasn't it?
Yeah, and then the first six, yeah. Because this is open, just open after they started doing the logging.
Yeah, if you look at the map, the whole, the whole region's within the Aquifer Protection District, so the groundwater's quite high there. And it's significant and notable fact.
Yep.
And typically on something like this, that groundwater.
Mine's Charlie, his other.
That groundwater table won't differ very much in the sands and gravels, it doesn't work a double lot. You know, you may get a two-foot differential during the seasons, but that's about it.
We, uh, we did some, put in some monitoring wells, was it last week? Put in, dug up?
Yeah.
And I went to the lowest areas that I could find where I think you saw that standing water at one point. And I went pretty close to one of those thinking that, and it was six feet below that area. And this, I mean, we have seasonally high water right now because of all the snow, I believe. But I think what you saw in those was where they dragged all the trees or something. And it's a bunch of trees and clay and.
Oh, God, yeah.
Which gotta get cleaned up. But that's where I think you might have saw that standing water, because I had some concern when I saw it myself.
Well, yes, but there are other sites on the site that do have, that have standing water. Because I just live up the road from this, I go back in there all the time. And.
Pardon me?
Trespasser. Oh, absolutely. Do you hear that, TV? Um, yeah, um, how far do they have to stay above water?
Five feet.
Five, okay.
Five or six feet, yeah.
All right. Anything else? Any other questions from anybody?
I would.
Go.
I, I wouldn't mind taking a look at the site.
Sightwalk?
I, I, yeah, sure, I'll make a motion that we take a sightwalk out there with people who are willing sometime in the near future.
We, we don't even have an application for it, yeah?
We could wait, yeah, we could wait until.
Is the gate unlocked or have you locked the gate up?
No, the gate's unlocked, I should have put a lock on it tomorrow.
And they'll break it, they'll cut it off, it won't last. There's nothing left on there. Or they'll go around it.
Yeah, we can.
But I, I would give you a key, if you needed a key.
But I, I, yeah, I think we would like to take, because there's some people on the board maybe who've never been out there.
I haven't.
It's an interesting site, it really is, it's something.
So when, when we come back into the conditional use permit, will that be a public hearing the next time?
Uh, no. We'll accept the application, we'll make sure it's got everything we need, then we'll set up a date for a public hearing. Not a fire bugger's.
Do a sightwalk before.
Do a sightwalk before that and, so yeah, we're looking at it months and months, maybe a couple of years.
Mid-June.
We'll be mining snow walls.
There you go, right. Midway used to take stuff out during the winter. All right, well, then.
Yep, so something to you, how far ahead?
Soon or about, soon or about. Next week, you're gonna rabbit out of the hat next week. Yep. And if you guys want, you can meet on site, if you want or whatever.
Great.
Well, thanks for coming in and a good one.
Thank you very much.
Good luck on the ticket, boys.
Yeah, one more set big.
So like that, what's that big scale? What happens at the big scale?
It's one of their chips.
They tap the holes. So now 11 by 17s were?
And what's a big?
One, one's a big, maybe I can grab one and use it then.
Yeah, but they, if they're small, they can't be reusable without, you know what I mean?
I think those 11 by 17s are typically, we try to make that size so we can take it down to that. It's just the hand that had a lot of.
And the depth of the wall has changed.
It has, okay.
Awesome, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, take care. Kenny. Bruce and Karen McFerson. 1115 Snowwell Drive, map 1208, lot, 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 one. Best practical location application applying to demolish existing house and deck. Construct a 20 by 40 structure. Replace deck with patio, replace retaining wall, install septic system. Has this come to us before?
No, everybody else in the neighborhood has.
No, it's one of that.
Which stone, right?
That's a new road.
New what?
Off a thrash road.
Oh.
Off where?
Thrushes.
Off a square?
It's a new road off a square?
So.
I'd say the 50s, I think it's cement blocked in the basement.
Uh, how close are they to?
Forty-five.
Currently 45?
They're, oh, wait a minute now.
Those were.
They're proposing a patio?
That one, it's the, you'll see in the pictures, that's an existing deck. They're gonna remove that and the retaining wall that's up front. They're gonna have to put the retaining wall back in place and change the deck to a patio.
But it's gonna be in the same spot?
Terminal patio?
Did you guys get, oh, you got some pictures, okay.
So then the stairs going down to the patio from the house, or is?
They're on the side of the house, they'd rip those out, put on the wind too, I would assume.
So then it'll be on the ground?
The patio?
Yeah.
Correct.
Walkout basement?
It's gonna be a retainable.
The basements aren't existing.
Oh, so the patio's down here now.
Well, it's a walkout, do you have a picture of the lower level?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's the driveway.
That already is.
Is this the driveway or the road?
That is looking at from the road, and that is the parking area driveway.
Okay, the, the road's here and that's the parking area driveway.
Beautiful. I don't see a walkout go out of the basement.
You know, this door on the side, is that what the walkout is?
I thought there was something on the front, but yeah, that is.
That's a door, yeah.
The door that goes onto the deck.
The door that goes right, right in front of the bushes there.
Yeah.
It's that one, I think. But it still doesn't go down here.
Right, so.
It's still left up.
Oh, maybe there's one in the back too.
They're gonna use the foundation, they're gonna be walking out the.
Rip it all out and put a brand new one.
Only do a 30% expansion.
Correct, in the backside.
They gonna move back at all?
I think we're talking sidewalk.
They're proposed not to, but to me, there's three feet that you can move that back.
Well, let's do it.
It's a man, Gavin.
The, the separation between the septic, septic and the, and the house allows three feet still to come back. They were hoping not to move it back any, but there's at least three feet there.
Well, they're, they're gonna trash the foundation too, right? Yeah, so it's making an error.
Exactly.
Right, if they're taking it out.
And the.
And the retaining wall, why is that coming out and being replaced?
It's in failure.
It's just not in very good shape.
You can see one of the retaining walls and one of the pitches coming from.
Wooden ties, it looks like?
Yeah, that's the one they're ripping out, there's one with the newer retaining wall blocks in it. They're gonna continue that from the neighbors right across.
And where's the retaining wall in this?
Right where the deck is, I think it's shown as the patio.
Right, right here or right there?
Yeah, it goes right across, this is the retaining wall.
Oh, this thing, ew.
Coming right across.
Oh, yeah.
Right across.
Oh, so see, there's, there's a door going out that way.
So we got two boards there.
Yeah.
Switches with you guys. I have those and I'll give them to them.
So this is.
You could really use a little more control like that.
Just chip it up.
Cut the round.
There you go, thank you. So all the lock would be re-vegetated, rip the house out, replace the patio, replace the retaining wall, and re-vegetate the lot.
And a new septic.
And a new septic.
Can you pump house?
I just meant to say. They can't have the new plan, so works for me.
Well, how many bedrooms in the existing house?
I'm not sure. Three bedrooms proposed on the new plan. Actually, it says the system's 1960, the existing one.
It's a barrel of the hall of the.
Trench, it's a trench, two bullets.
Kenny, what's this shed here? It's a little one off the deck.
Oh, pump house, pump house has to stay.
Pump house for.
What, from the lake?
Oh, they have a point?
Uh, probably gonna treat it.
Yeah, point. They're looking to demo the shed that's on the side too and move that into the house. It's almost attached to it on the right-hand side from the lake.
Oh, that's not the pump house there, that's the shed, okay.
Pump house is a little, it's a little baby rocket ship thing.
Right, pump house, yeah.
And, and the entry point to this place is off of West Shore?
Correct, where Pat Hannah put that new road kinda would be one, or come in and flush the other way.
Got it, yeah. Is that yours or his?
Mine.
Well, are you guys comfortable making a decision like this? Do you wanna go take a look at the site? What's, what's your druthers?
Pretty straightforward.
Is it?
All right. They're moving farther back, they're putting in a new septic.
Well, their proposal, leave it where it said.
Correct.
We could move it back.
I'd, I'd really like to see some new vegetation.
Yeah, the whole site's gonna have to be re-vegetated.
Yeah, the, behind the house too, from this photo.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I'd like to see some re-vegetation there, not just in front of the house.
That's where the septic's going. I think that area there, so it would have...
Be like a lawn.
Exactly.
Yeah.
They're way excessive, they're twenty percent block coverage, so when they're all said and done, they'll be reducing it by probably twenty percent from what they are now.
Oh, you're saying they're like twenty-five percent per use right now or something?
I would say they're close to forty or fifty.
Okay, so then they're gonna reduce that down.
Yeah.
And they're gonna reduce it why? Because the deck is going replaced by a...
Uh, just on the open soils.
And re-vegetating this gravel, this, this picture right here in the back of the water, if they had vegetation there, that would really help.
And that's where you have to start, is at the driveway till when you're looking at all the water coming down. Everyone likes to fix the beach area, but if you don't fix it from the road down, you don't do any good.
Ben's bringing all that ground dust.
They're moving it back, they're re-vegetating it, they're putting a new septic.
Then they put some more in the spring.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, yeah, I like it.
You're, you're comfortable literally with that three feet pushing it back?
If that's the maximum Ken thinks they can do.
Yeah, you need twenty feet between the septic and the house, and this is really coarse soil, so I'd, I'd keep the septic separation at, at the twenty.
So, so the proposed patio is going exactly where the existing deck is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea.
It's that retaining wall that comes across from this way here that's gonna really set it all up.
Now, is the other retaining wall, does that start on the, the neighbor's yard too or is that just on theirs? The wooden one?
The wooden one, it was all wooden, and when we did a best possible location for the neighbor a couple of years ago, they replaced that front wall, so they're just gonna rip the wood out and replace the same wall so it all looks continuous all the way through.
Well, how close is this place to all that, that one that's over there right now that's big reconstruction going on?
The one that's more than a hundred feet away from water?
It could be.
You think so?
It's just gigantic.
It's right next door.
Right next door?
Yeah, from the water, left-hand side. And there's a new house right next to that too that's...
A lot of stuff going on, seems like there.
That's where all the money is.
Oh, that's the other side.
That's right.
Little boat.
Yeah.
Need change on the side setbacks?
I think he's trying to adjust a little bit, but it, it's conforming on side setbacks now, so it'll have to be conforming.
Ken, you think they, on the, when you're looking at from the water on the right-hand side, the side where they have their dog, you think they, you know, back down there occasionally to deal with their boat?
When they, I, I don't think they can get the vehicle down, you'd be down to ten feet in the retaining wall, but the theory is with the contractor, when he rips that out, he's gonna have to stop at the lakeside and work his way out of it. They won't be able to get back down in there for construction purposes, so I don't think they can get in there with a vehicle.
Looks like a good, good site for some water bars or something. Something that put the water to the side as opposed to have that shoot, shoot.
I'd try to get it in the ground if we could.
Right, right, yeah.
Push it to the side.
Now, it's the neighbor that gets it, so...
Something to stop the flow going right down.
Yeah, rain guard or something like that, some way to get it, it's coarse, coarse gravelly soil, so if you get it in the ground, it's gonna disappear.
Absolutely, yeah.
He just needs a hole.
Yeah, here's a ten foot. Well, what do you guys wanna do? We can entertain a motion now, if you want to take a site walk, we can do that. If you've got enough information, if you're comfortable with Junior's recommendation, we can go that route.
Kent's comfortable with it. I'll make a motion to, uh, do what Kent proposed.
All right, moving it back three feet.
Move it back three feet, vegetate it.
Pre-vegetation.
Move all the water on the site.
Did somebody second it?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further conditions, Tom?
Just curious, what are we working with these days for the site re-vegetation? Have you talked to...
Acton Wakefield is the easier one to get a hold of and stuff, but these individuals can get us a good plan and have them review it versus have them draw it up. So if these guys draw one up, we can get them to just review it.
Does he use, does Jimmy use York County sort of...
They don't return anybody's phone calls. Once we lost the last guy, it's, it's hard to get him back and get him organized, so Acton Wakefield has kept Sam full-time, year-round. So at least there's somebody there, and when they're not busy, they're really responsive to the calls, so...
But this is Squibb on?
Uh, they'll do it.
Really?
Especially if, if Jim draws up the plans and brings it to them, and then they can just draw things on top of it too.
Is there, is there a little help for Acton Wakefield in that transaction?
They charge.
Oh, but...
Just like Southern Maine would. So, at first, they were hesitant to it and charge a fee.
Yeah.
Southern Maine's gonna be seventy-five bucks right out the door.
Yeah.
So...
And does he do the, is he willing to do the follow-up too?
Sam? Oh, they, they love to go out and see what's done after and how the rains affected it and watch it afterward.
Yeah, storms. Well, that's a good reason.
Anything else? Alright, then, all those in favor of Kent's recommendation on the best possible location for da-da-da-da-da-da? Say aye.
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 All opposed, nay? We've made somebody very happy. Alright, anything else, girls and boys? Uh, is it after eight?
It's gotta wait till...
Couple minutes.
Oh, is that all? Oh, okay.
Doing well.
Well, then get, get your thoughts all together. Give us two minutes, even on a fast clock.
Yeah, and that's a little fast.
That's, that's the one we're using. I don't care. What?
Seven fifty-five.
Yeah, we've got five minutes.
They can sue us. We'll, we'll go by the clock we got here. We can shut the door.
Yeah, lock it. Put that table against there.
Keep the fire lit out. Whoa, let's keep it closed.
Uh, I may not be at the next meeting, so, um, it's gonna be you.
Oh, just do, reminder on those safes, we're gonna, we're gonna meet in this parking lot, I think, too, is it?
Okay.
But we'll have another meeting before that, right?
Yeah, you'll have June, the first meeting in June, which is ever, which is...
Fourth, I think.
Whatever it is. So Red Gate first and then two eighteenth.
The site walk to the eleven?
Yes.
It's a non-meeting.
Oh, that's a non?
Yes.
It's a non-meeting meeting.
Right.
This is kind of a nice little improvement in your neighborhood.
Well, oops, is TV still on? We should probably just adjourn the meeting. Or are you gonna look for some kind of official, Tom? Are you gonna look for anything official from us?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just...
Alright, alright, alright. Alright, fine. Go ahead, Tom.
Monday night, the eighteenth, the finance committee voted three to zero with a vote of ought not to pass, the chairman abstained, but his wishes were in, in sync with the other three individuals. And I was just hoping that the board tonight would consider making a recommendation on articles three through five.
What did they, what did they say, what did they say ought not to pass? All of them or...
All three of them, yes.
Now, was there any discussion?
Uh, very briefly, gone over it before. The, the major points were, it didn't really seem to make sense environmentally and, uh, there wasn't a lot of discussion. We, we had talked about it at previous meetings, but, um, the folks that were there were, Tom Gore was chairing, cause Richard Neal has slipped out from that board, and Nancy was there, that new gentleman, Dr. Williams was there, and myself, and that was it.
Firebrands.
And Tom was chairing the meeting, so, Tom Gore.
So...
So was there any impact of the vote? Like, it really just, because...
What's that?
Is there any impact on the vote?
Just the recommendation on the warrant, it'll just say, you know, the selectmen recommend this, finance warrant recommends this.
So on the ballot?
Planning board recommends this.
Oh, wait a minute. No, it's not, nothing's on the ballot, that's right. It won't make any difference.
We're unclear, well...
Well, it could be posted somewhere, right?
Well, you have to find out...
To the public somehow.
It, it can't be a political thing, so if you advocate one way or another, that can't be within, I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty feet or something.
Right, but it could be posted on the town website that Warren Finance recommended this about these articles, couldn't it?
I don't know.
I'm sure it could.
Jennifer has said that there, that she was gonna look into a means to, and that, that might be part of our discussion tonight, to send a message up to the town clerk to please make it whatever legal means possible for the expression of both finance, warrant committee and the planning board to be publicly made known. I think that's not an outlandish request.
Now, one of the proposals did happen to come from the planning board though. And it was, and what was the vote on that? Anybody remember?
Unanimous.
But it was also at a time when we didn't know what was really going on. I mean, they, they told us to come up with an ordinance plan.
Right.
And so we did that to the best of our ability at the time, not realizing that that was gonna be thrown out the window, basically, and they come back with two different ones that are, you know, more stringent.
It was thrown out the window, it's still on the warrant.
They're not more stringent.
Now, there's a looser.
There's a looser.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. You're right.
Because it has to go to the state. The state is gonna not let them build accessory buildings.
I think, I think our, our proposal has something to do with some input from Ken.
Yeah.
Uh, people that had been impacted by that change that happened to property that they owned at the time.
But the original proposal was from my office, the recommendation was resource protection.
Right.
Not resource protection out of the shoreline zone.
Right.
And I had mentioned a few times that it wasn't the direction that upstairs wanted either. So it wasn't, I mean, it was totally blindsided when you didn't want to listen that they wanted more deregulation.
Well, you were blindsided?
No, I wasn't.
Well, the samples we were given all had...
Oh, 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 yeah, okay, we were blindsided.
But I had mentioned several times that this ordinance really isn't deregulating a lot, but, I mean...
Well, it was deregulating something.
Something.
I agree with Bob though, that the promise in which we originally came up with our new ordinance changes ended up being, it wasn't supported by as much as they initially said it was.
It was reactive.
Yeah, we, they were like, oh, you better do this because, you know, these people are gonna want abatements and it's like, okay, but, you know, we looked into it and...
And more of the samples that we saw had to do with putting accessory buildings on spots than...
Outside of the shoreline zone. Every, every single example Ken showed us was outside the shoreline zone. So the way we, you know, I think we did a great job crafting something that's, you know, like a compromise. But it was, in fact, being...
We're not required to say or do anymore at this point, are we?
No, but we could, right?
I don't know.
We could make a recommendation if we wanted to as a board, we could go over the three and, and say what we thought.
The other thing that's a little troubling, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's about it.
The other thing that's a little, a little troubling to me is the sense, and do you have anything to share with us, Ken, from DEP? She wording that...
On the developed and undeveloped?
Yeah.
So how, it used to be you'd have an ordinance in the shoreline zone, you sent it to the DEP before voting and they would give guidance on it. They got so many out there that never passed or sometimes wasted their time, so now they're doing it after the fact. So I ran that ordinance past him, the developed and undeveloped, they're not too concerned about it. Normally what they would do is send a letter of correction or a letter of, um, notice, and you'd have to put that into your ordinance that your ordinance is not in line with it, but where it's a conditional use through the planning board and you guys would be looking at relocating or best locations for it, uh, they wouldn't even advise, they said they wouldn't even send us a notice on it.
So, it may come out that when a voter is voting on this, and as it's written, excuse me, the intent, I think, is, is, um, in sync with what the planning board's intent was, which was that it cover both developed and undeveloped lots. When we, when we omitted the word undeveloped, that was our intention, but, um, when you, when you take that similar premise and put it into the resource protection areas that are in the shoreline zone, those in my mind are some of the most sensitive areas that exist, and they're already, particularly if you made developed lots in the shoreline zone in the RP area eligible for expansion, I, I think that's going totally...
Well, it's in the buffer, it's not in the RP. It's in the buffer area, some of which is over two-hundred feet wide.
It could be...
Just to remind you, I mean...
It could have to be up to you guys.
Well, that's what I'm saying, see, I, I just think it's going a hundred and eighty degrees in the wrong direction. We are, I mean, I, I think everybody is, is in agreement that the, our, our, the, the majority in particular in these sensitive areas around our Great Pines has been overdeveloped and we're, you know, we're fighting a, a bi-weekly battle here at the table to make sure that that doesn't get too more fragile by, by overdevelopment. And to, to open that door, I just think, particularly for the voters, I think it's unfair because a, a voter is not gonna know, nor do we, how, how the DEP is gonna translate this. Uh, we might think that they would merely make it in conformity with the state wording, i.e. undeveloped, but the selectmen might, we don't know, because we haven't been told, might very well ask for the whole nine yards, thereby having the intention of the planning board follow on this, on their work as well.
Yeah.
Which is developed and undeveloped. I, I just think it's part of our role as planning board members maybe to express an opinion once in a while. We do it on other things. I don't see what the obstacle here is besides maybe the, um, the sense that we're in conflict with the board of selectmen, but that's as it is. We're not, we're doing the best we can to take care of Acton.
Go.
Well, I just, I just think it's interesting that, um, if, if all three, you know, if these articles were approved, that all these best possible locations we've, we've gone through would be eligible for expansion up to fifteen hundred square feet if they weren't already there, and it's kinda like, why have we been going through this process?
None of the best possible locations we've done would be involved in this.
None of those are within, they're not within resource protection? None of them aren't? They're just within shoreline zone, it's not resource protection within the...
Because you haven't been able to do anything in RP.
Exactly.
So we haven't...
Okay, so none of the, that's what I'm trying to clarify, cause I'm just wondering if, you know, someone got the thirty percent expansion, that they then come back and say, oh, I wanna go fifteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, there, there is two rules out there for in the shoreline zone, thirty percent, and there's an alternative which goes to fifteen hundred square feet if you're more than seventy-five feet away, well, looking at the past five, ten years of it, everybody's over the fifteen hundred square feet, so going to fifteen hundred, if we change from the thirty percent, that would be more restrictive for the people. It'd be much easier for us to, um, regulate. It'd be much easier for us to regulate, because we wouldn't have to figure out the volume and the square footage and what was there in 1989, it'd be flat, 1,500, that's it, that's all you get, that's your house, your shed, your garage, everything. It'd be much easier for us to monitor, but, so that's an alternative that's out there, but we haven't brought it to you guys to look at.
I think you did mention it one time.
I think so, because it keeps popping it up, somebody will find something on the internet.
But we want to stay consistent, I mean, it only makes sense, you know, it's like, oh, my neighbor did the 30% wide. You know, why does this other guy get to do the 1,500, I mean, it would be nice to stay consistent with what we've been doing, I think.
That's what I thought, we've got the records, we've got the system in place, so.
And it seems to be working, too, I mean, you're comfortable with this system.
It's a pain in the ass, that's for sure, it's really, really hard to look and find what was there in 1989 and what they've done since.
Yeah. That's a delicate issue, that's for sure, fresh water, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, I think the Blaine Board should vote as well on the, on the three articles and just see, you know, just so that it's clear to the people of the town that we're not endorsing all three of these, we didn't bring all three of them forward, and just a little bit more insight, I don't know, of course, I don't know where it would be posted while we voted, but I still support voting on it.
Then maybe a second part of what we do tonight is just send a request up to Jennifer's office to please find if there are means to legally express the vote of this board and the Finance and Warren Board to the voter prior to voting. I don't know if there is such a means or not, she's spoken before that in the past there was a sheet in the foyer, you know, as you come into the voting area.
That just tells, that's just a copy of the ballot, you can't advocate one way or the other, anything that's on a referendum ballot within X amount of feet of the town hall.
It wouldn't be advocating anything, it'd just be merely stating a vote.
Yeah, that's advocating. Jeez, crackers. Anybody else with two cents? Bob, you're writing something down.
Yeah, I'm writing down what I would like to.
Was that your motion list?
Read as a motion, actually, just to move it forward and then we can make a decision.
What is?
I'm gonna move that we explain to the voters and/or the selectmen that we do not support the first two ordinance questions. We have a planning board, I'd say.
Is there a second? Guys, for the lack of a second.
Well, we should kind of clarify just a little bit how we.
He said first two, but it's.
I'm just wondering how we would explain it to him, just verbally or through a letter or just?
Well.
How, you know, and how explain it to the.
Well, it'd seem confusing as to how that information would get out there.
Absolutely, yeah, true, I agree.
That, well, whatever we end up doing, that's gonna be the 800-pound gorilla in the room. Right now, he's, we're trying to decide, are we gonna do something or are we gonna not do something? And the sooner we come, the sooner we decide, yes, we're gonna do something, or no, we're not gonna make recommendations, we're going home, then, so that's what we're trying to do right now. Once we decide we're gonna make a recommendation or we're not, we make the recommendation or we don't, and then we figure out how we're gonna get the word out.
Okay, alright.
So Bob's motion was that we not recommend the first two articles, that's all you said, we do not recommend the first two. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, further to squat.
I thought, oh, he doesn't vote, okay.
No, it's okay for this. Because this is America, and we're going by Vanelle's Rules of Order.
Thank you very much.
I was thinking it would maybe make more sense to vote as a planning board for each vote on each question, so that for each question that we have, it outlined how we stand.
The vote becomes a public record.
It's part of our minutes, it's.
Yeah, they can view the camera and see.
Yeah, but I mean, beyond the tape, it's a public record, it's in our minutes, and where else?
Well, we can make a request that hopefully it will appear somewhere else. I don't know what will happen with that, it's, I haven't gotten a clear response from Jennifer's office.
Well, if she leaves it in the minutes, then those will be on the internet. Once they're approved, right, she waits for two weeks? Or does she?
I put them on after you approve them.
So it's gonna be two weeks before these minutes can approve, whatever we do tonight, and what's the date of that gonna be?
June 4th.
Gives you five days.
Something.
And anybody who's already voted absentee is doing so without our knowledge.
I have a question to that point, Brenda, when somebody comes in to your office, Brenda's office, Kenny's office, and/or Jennifer's office and said, and asks, what the hell is this all about, what do you tell them?
Read this. If the clerk's office is open.
I didn't ask you.
No, I'm just telling you, I'm telling you to make it quick, if the clerk's office is open, there's not too much they can do.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, next.
No, but I mean, how do they recommend information to the voter if they request it?
I haven't been asked.
I think Jennifer might be asked, right?
We've had a couple of people that we had to get off the upstairs floor and go stand 250 feet away and discuss it.
I've been asked upstairs. Yeah, but not in the building. It's not why not.
But I mean, just explanation purely as to what inserting the word shoreline district into this clause.
But we don't talk about anything.
No, no, you can't.
You can't, you.
You can't talk about anything.
You wouldn't provide a photocopy of the ordinance in the section that was related or anything like that.
They're talking about the legal prohibition of talking about this when voting can go on upstairs.
When the clerk's office is open.
Different.
Only when the clerk's office is open.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah, so where are we with this? With not recommending the first two?
I second the motion, so we're gonna take a vote, right?
Well, if we're done with the discussion, does anyone else, does anyone have anything else to add?
I would merely state that I think the articles in agreement with Yoli should be taken. One, two, three should not be linked up together, the, as Bob said initially, Article Five, the Planning Board ordinance was proposed prior to any knowledge of what the selectmen were proposing, and we were reacting to the physical damage argument that was offered to us by the Board of Selectmen.
Well, now, to be honest, I wasn't acting to any physical damage.
And we have still not had any evidence provided by the Board of Selectmen to buttress their case on the public hearing on the 30th. So we were reacting to something that has turned out to be imaginary after our inquiry with the assessor, that didn't stand out.
But didn't we originally come up with this based on what Ken was bringing to us, not necessarily what the selectmen?
Right, it wasn't until.
They came after.
Yeah, it was after, they may have had, they may have discussed it amongst themselves, but I don't recall that big abatements being an issue until we were into the process, getting close to the end of it.
I thought that point came up in our public hearing.
But that was after we had the ordinance, after we'd been working on it, that's what I'm talking about, when we were working on this, it was just that people had come to us and they, blah, 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 they couldn't use their land now because there'd been a change. And there were a handful of people, the selectmen asked us to look at this.
They did.
And we did. In plumb remarks to us, they were also looking at it.
I, I just think it's really reactive to change a zoning ordinance, because half dozen people, you know, if you're gonna be fooling around with zoning ordinances and whipping them back and forth like that.
Did we switch to the schoolhouse?
I was just gonna say, oh, boys, that's exactly, on the whole house on the red carpet.
Without the authority of a petition to give it some credibility.
You're gonna signal off the fire in a pocket of petition.
I wasn't talking about this.
Ah, yikes, anyway, further discussion on the motion, Gavin, or do you wanna move the vote?
I was gonna just propose another motion, which was that we vote on.
We've already got one.
I already seconded it, too, and it seemed to.
We're trying.
Alright, yes, I proposed we vote on the motion then.
Alright, good.
Absolutely.
The motion is that we do not recommend the first two, was that it?
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, all those opposed, raise your hand, one, two. Alright, so the motion passes, we're not recommending the first two proposing changes, pardon me?
Does that imply that everybody does?
Well, I'm not voting.
You just said four to two.
I said, well, I didn't mean two.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we also not recommend Article Five.
Uh, which one is that, is that ours?
That's the last, that's the Planning Board article.
Alright, so Tom's proposing, his motion is we do not recommend Article Five, which was our proposal, is there a second?
I'll second it, what the heck.
Any discussion?
I don't think we really need to approve anything, but, or it doesn't prove.
I mean, the status call, the reason I'm stating this is the status call has worked out fine to date, there's no, you know, there might be some people who are upset about it, but that's the nature of zoning. Everybody is not made happy by every safeguard that's put in place.
It's life in the bigs.
But it also gives like some flexibility or some fairness to people who are really in a jam. I mean, I think we did a pretty good job of going through each item and really looking at the properties that Ken brought forward and say.
And it's a conditional use, so we can, just because they bring something to us doesn't mean we have to approve it. And if they don't like it, they have to take us to court, and that's, that's a lot of bother on their part, and it could be fun for us. So, any further discussion? Alright, the motion was that we not recommend Article Five.
Article Five ought not to pass, yeah.
Alright, all those in favor of Tom's motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? Alright, well, there's at least three members that voted no, alright.
I don't know how to.
Three to one, three to one, three to one, that was the other vote, too, there's only four official votes cast.
Can I just clarify?
So it's one to three?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, you're right, as long as you're right, that's all that matters.
As long as you get the three to one.
I don't know.
Can I just clarify that my no vote for the first thing that we passed was only because of order of, that I wanted, I was thinking of order, I'd rather prefer to vote on each one separately, but not so much that I was against them.
What was the vote again on Article?
Well, you're running for office?
It was one to three.
It was one to three, but I'm not sure what was the first one.
It was.
It can't be four to two.
No.
Well, that was one.
It was.
Because you have five.
It was three to one, because I don't vote, so there's only four official votes, one, two, three, four.
So how did that vote go, was it three to one, or was it one to three?
I think it was.
Oh, that's right, so I, that's right.
I think it was three to one, what did you vote on the first one? That we, that we do not.
That we do not recommend, I voted yes, we should not.
That we should not, and Yoli voted yes, we should.
She voted.
She voted no.
She voted no, Art voted yes, we should not, so that was two to two?
I didn't vote.
Alright, then I'll vote, and I'll break the tie, and recommend that we don't.
I'll tell you, break it.
What?
It's a two to two.
It was two to two.
It's two.
So it was, Tom didn't vote?
Tom didn't vote.
He abstained, so it couldn't have been two to two.
It can't be two to two, right.
I think I was the one that voted negative.
Also.
Two to one, Tom abstained.
You should just vote again.
Oh, okay, well, if that's, you voted for the motion, you voted for the motion, you voted against. Fine, then it was, I thought Tom voted against it.
So what is it?
It was two to one in favor of the motion.
Okay.
And what was the section that we voted?
The second one was.
So if Tom abstains.
One, four.
I voted two, right.
And against.
But he counts.
But if Tom abstains, then doesn't want to be.
He just called it, he counted earlier, I'm just saying.
That's before two came in.
Oh, I got you, I got you.
He doesn't have to vote.
Just trying to understand.
Yeah, he doesn't have to vote, and if he doesn't.
It's an abstention.
Yeah, but you don't have to bring in an alternate.
Okay, gotcha.
It's only if there's somebody not here or they have a conflict or a pecuniary interest.
He can't one abstention, is what you're saying.
Right, I forgot that, so Andy got the last one, it was one, four, three, against.
Yes.
So one was for ought not to pass.
Right.
It failed.
Yes. Anything else? No, you wanted.
Oh, yeah, the thing I'm tired of is to please make an inquiry to the town clerk's office to do what she can to express those votes to the public, some, through some means.
Only express the first one?
How do you?
All of them, every.
Failed, how can he?
Well, you're so expressive, though, just for transparency, I mean, the voters need to know what the planning board's thinking, that's kind of the idea.
But I don't think you change the process.
Who voted to not vote?
I don't think the voters.
Yes, double negative.
You do have double.
Just ask her, ask her if there's some way that we can let the public know what are these two motions, the results of these two motions.
I don't think you can ask a town official to.
And the Warren Finance Committee's recommending.
Do we know, do we include the Finance Committee?
No, that's, no, we don't deal with.
No, 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 we're just asking if there's a legal means to express to the public what the vote of the.
How we felt about.
Just the plan?
Yes, how we felt about the referendum. You know, whether it can be online or not, or whatever. Alright, anything else? Goodnight, cable land.